Good afternoon, House of Commons. Senator President. Legal unit, how are you?
Senator President. Head Finas and Account.
I am a woman. Head of Admin and Health Services, Nada.
Why do you still? See people works. I mean, Nigeria police works.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. CP, the Ma'afah, PIB, FSI, Commission of Police, Police Mobile Force, Detective, Non-Policice, Attorney, 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 I am someone who is well inspired. I represent the Saragut, the position of President of the President.
That's going to the chairman. I'm in beside the engineer. Thank you very much for the way on Nigeria Corporation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dr. Swam. Maturo, Montaya, Director of HR, Nigeria Corporation.
Distinguished Chairman. Distinguished Members. My name is Pascal Roumane. I am official Nigeria Corporation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tumisha Blishi. This party is a national office.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tumisha. My name is Mr. Sambo.
Please throw again. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Mr. Sambo.
Good evening, sir. My name is Joseph Higyan, Attorney.
Distinguished Chairman. And I'm, distinguished members. I am program faculty, Director of Recruitment and Accommodation, Deputy Officer of the 49th Circuit, Federal Service of Police, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I'm from Friday, Kaka, from PM Shabna and Co. Ameloya.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tempo Wotopa, from the Office of Peter Shabna and Co. I present Chabian Gahm, the Attorney.
All of us good, you know that. I am Zainab Hussein Mandali, from PM Shabna and Co. I'm legal.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I am with the T S E, I am with the T S E.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Wotopa, from the Department of Commerce, Government, and Defense, and the President of the P S A, and I'm with the P S A.
Ah, Mr. Tumisha. Uh, Mr. S, my name is Senator Mohamed Fushu. Now, I represent the Sarawak South.
Thank you, Mr. Tumisha. Our guest. My name is Senator Ibrahim Kani, and I'm the Deputy Secretary for the Ministry of Commerce. Thank you. Uh, let me, once again, welcome you to this very important session. Uh, in order to make it much more easier for us, I will try to find out the parties that are available, so that we can know the matters that we will be able to take today and not take today, so that we know which ones have those that we will not, that we will not be able to take them because maybe some either the petition or the response there are not available. Uh, this matter ought to have come up yesterday, but because of the problem of hide, we lost somebody from the House of Reps. So, under normal circumstances, circumstances by our tradition, once either a member of the House of Rep or Senate, if we wish anyone of them on that very day, we must sit, and that was the reason why police sit yesterday. So, sorry for the inconvenience that might have caused some of you who came yesterday about the matter of order, who not go on. Uh, Mr. Kla, listen, I think we, let us find a close matter that I hope we like to go on.
So, the first case is between engineer and a company, Ope, versus Nigeria.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, based on the national service, I wish to request that we take the case with the police, so that at least they can go and serve us later.
Why, why? I think you will not for the immigration.
Uh, most English, Chairman, and other distinguished members, other ordinary persons, to look at these matters and sponsors, for that purpose of that, sometime, I think I should be a team, mostly, high somewhere, see women as well, acting on behalf of Mrs. Kalangos, representing the petition before this honorable and distinguished committee in a case of raising an illegitimate accusation of late Captain Kalangos' land, and secular to Nigeria Corporation. I made that case out, and at the end of the day, the police requested for three weeks to investigate her allegation, and I believe that here, we made a hard series of meetings before now, we stayed aside in Protocote, and I believe, want to hear from the other side, I would know the way for, thank you, sir.
Why, sorry? See, why?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very sorry for the output and I think of exceptions and corrections after. Um, as I introduced, our petition again is not due to police appear here, and in the access of police mobile force, my due scope included on a piece of land, or a parcel of land in Protocote, which brought the Protocote Police and sent here. On both, I said, I've been here for the first time, let me go to Protocote, investigate, physically see what is on ground, investigate the petition, and give feedback. So, give feedback in three weeks. In line with that, I went to reverse date, investigated the matter, leave the police circles, soft things for myself, and I'm here with feedback. Regarding the petition and the content of the petition I've been quote, the fact is that the plot of the man's.
We have your feedback mentioned.
I can do that, but let me just, I have my.
My thoughts are, my thoughts are also.
Okay, sir.
Yes, sir. How do you, how do you, one, two?
Yes, okay, I never knew.
Well, what, just, just, yeah, I can. Why, why, tell him again, don't forget.
So, in line with the petition, the plot in question or disputed plot actually belongs to the petitioners. Plot number two, on that land, Nigeria, where they claim the police are good, is a fact, the police are good, the land belongs to the petitioners. So, the second point we are here to make is that we may bypass all the reasonable data. So, we come up with a motion that will vacate the land. Third option is, since we're there for it, why, we have this reason to see the possibility of negotiation, alternative dispute resolution negotiation, so that we settle, at of course, and retain that place, if they agree, they are open to negotiation. To that extent, I, I call the IG, we dedicated the Commission of Police, the works, our building, to come with me, as I'm making this permission, to take it away from me, to discuss modalities for ejecting the police there, or negotiating with each other to retain that place permanently. So, in the nutshell, it is not our land, it is the other. We are ready to vacate, and we're going to vacate, let's wait there, ask us, we can negotiate, so I want to connect my Commission of Police box, which will be here, when we leave here, to interface the process, interface with them, as part of the progress of negotiation, take that information, and then vacate, thank you, sir.
Yes, uh, thank you, Ramo CP, for the concise explanation. Uh, petitioner.
Yes, sir.
You don't want, they have told you that they have been corrected, you are petitioned, and they are open to negotiation.
Yes, sir.
We want you to tell us here. We want them to vacate, or we want them to negotiate with you, because we don't want you to go and come back here.
Yes, sir.
So, tell us what you want.
The, the truth or the pattern is that, personally, at anybody, any right, any person that comes to see that place, we find out that police are in need of that, they are in need of it, just like they used to raising the politi. But so, yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
My apologies.
Okay, sir, let me, let me, we are eligible to negotiation, because I've seen that for security reasons, they need that place. But what to? What do you, but what would most humbly appeal to this, this committee, is that whatever position they are trying to make us take, let them win on it, that is not in their agenda, so that they won't let us come back here, yes, sir?
Thank you very much. Uh, from, what we have had is that there are rules for settlement, and the settlement is only so to say. Uh, the circumstances will just give you time, the rule to come back, the art of course, the art of, whatever the settlement is, let's try to get the outcome of your settlement within three weeks. Is that okay? Is three weeks okay?
It's okay, sir.
CP. CP. Is three weeks okay? Okay, now it is, CP works. CP works. Yeah, it's okay, sir. Three weeks is okay. So, Kla, three weeks is okay.
But that's your hard progress.
But you're sorry. DK Regani Esquire.
Yes, sir, I am representing it.
Okay, are you DK Regani, or?
I am Tempo Wotopa.
Okay, sir, what is your letter?
Yes, the letter, you have submitted the letter, I have the copy of the letter.
Okay, that, you are going to represent DK Regani?
My name is on the course list, my name is on the list, from the lawyers.
Okay, all right. So, the case is between DK Regani Esquire, Ope, and Shabna and Co., on behalf of Mr. Chivya, Demham, versus National and Regional Land Government Authority.
The petitioner.
The petitioner is not around, I can't slow you, he is not around, and I saw later from the lawyer, that another petition is to represent him. We'll give you another date, another, again, to be communicated to you. The other case is between engineer and a company, Ope, versus Nigeria Corporation. Engineer and a company? Okay. Uh, Nigeria.
Sorry, uh, sorry, brother.
Sir?
Please tell the petitioner, if the next day, I do not want to, no, I just want him to hear the way, next day, if he does not show, and the right, and not show, and there's no defending, you, you are going to strike out the case. You understand? Thank you, Ramo.
Nigeria Corporation. They are, are they ready?
Yes, they are ready.
They are fully ready?
Yes, they are.
Are you a salute?
Yes, thank you. Why is it? Sorry. Hi, engineer, this is a party group, solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give, the poorest distinguished committee, shall be the truth, the whole of it, and nothing but the truth. So, uh. How many people are going to speak from Nigeria Corporation? Anybody who is going to?
Well, I have the lawyer here, a lawyer that are helping me, and the NRC here, Assistant Director, and Richard, so they may also be put in, so he, I love the case.
How many people are going to speak from Nigeria Corporation? Anybody who is going to?
Well, I have the lawyer here, a lawyer that are helping me, and the NRC here, Assistant Director, and Richard, so they may also be put in, so he, I love the case.
You do some of this, yeah. The evidence I shall give, the poorest distinguished committee, shall be the truth, the wrong truth, and nothing but the truth, so have to go. So, Nigeria Corporation, and the seat of the petitioner, from the petitioner, that was wrongly, wrongly terminated. What's your opposition?
Thank you, Tumisha Chair. Um, we have, earlier submitted, made a submission to this other committee, and you permit me, um, so the commission aid and signed by the Managing Director, as I'm here acting on behalf of the Managing Director. So, you permit me, I would like to read this submission. We invitation to public hearing on standing committee, on ethics, with privilege and public petition, in respect of the petition from engineer, against Nigeria Corporation for alleged, alleged wrongful termination of appointment by the corporation. The letter, 26 October, 2023, under both subject matter, refers this. In line with the content of thereof, and the attachment, the petition from the affirmation will wish to briefly submit as follows. Number one, the above name was employed in the service of the corporation as a football civil engineer effective January 1, 2018, and on.
Which page are you referring?
On page one, of this submission, you mean, to this other grounds. Sir? Distinguished else, sorry. Above name was employed, that's number one, into the service of the corporation as a football civil engineer effective January 1, 2018, and on to the termination of the appointment on the 1st March, 2023, was a civil, senior civil engineer, employed on posting to North Central District of the corporation as a district engineer DE. Engineer Akepadi was the lead of the appointment following G process and later procedures, which are in tandem with external rules. As a staff of NRC, most of the district engineer, in responsibilities amongst others, in terms of protection of railway critical assets, and prompt report to the superiors of any incident, inical to his interest of the organization, such as vandalism and stealing of railway truck materials, rail slippers, fish plate, holding gambols, panlock, plates, etc. Number two, it came to us as a surprise, the allegation of engineer Akepadi, who paid that he was unlawfully and illegally terminated from the service of Nigeria Corporation due to his resistance to dissuade corruption, theft, vandalism, and sabotage of public property by some corrupt NRC government officials in collaboration with some criminal elements. Contrary to his assertion, it is on record that on September 21, 2022, there was vandalism and stealing of railway's critical assets at Kamuru Station, located at 780 to 781, Zone 4 section of the North Central District. While that incident was regrettable, precious enough with the effort of some dedicated staff, some of the riders, including a seven and retired staff of Nigeria Corporation, were amongst those apprehended and added over to the police at Zone 4. Number three, this development, Mr. Awas Friday, the principal technical officer, PTO, tracking charge of the section, who reported it to engineer Akepadi, who paid promptly complicated to me, that is in appendix A, page 71 of our submission. However, for reasons best known to him, he concealed it from the railway district manager, add the head of the district, his immediate superior in charge of the district, who ought to have informed both orally and directly within the shortest possible time, on that reference, which is normally viewed with seriousness, is a critical asset, we all know how much the government is investing in railway now, and so, we take it seriously when it comes to railway materials and vandalism. Such deliberate inaction was unexpected by an officer of standing, except for his collaboration or connivance to it. Again, very disappointing to the knowledge of engineer Akepadi, subordinate mentioned about, about, above, visited Zone 4 police station, and without recourse to any justification of pay, one of the arrested key suspects, Dariel Inisha, which aimed at suppressing and altering evidence, this calculated, they know that aroused deep suspicion. Number four, although the district railway manager, Mr. Austin Achibor, through the magnanimity of the concerned staff, became aware of the incident same day, September 21, 22, see appendix A, page 365, it was surprising that the district engineer maintains still lips and never kept informed of it. Therefore, on September 28, 2022, seven days after the incident, quite convinced that there was a deliberate plot to keep him in the dark of it, the district manager visited the DPO Zone 4 police station for first-hand information on what transpired. Verified that there was actual vandalism at Kamuru Station, located at 780 to 781, Zone 4 section, and stealing of railway critical assets, truck materials, and some suspects were arrested, and while under the police custody, that Mr. Awas Friday, the PTO trap, who reports that to engineer, whose section was vandalized, and who was under the direct commission of the petitioner, and to the petitioner's mother, he has bailed one of the suspects, all these were carefully considered from the RDM. Number five, engineer Akepadi, who paid, having been aware of the visit of the district manager to the EPO Zone 4 police station, only sent a telegram eight days after the incident, see appendix A, page 71. Consequently, there are both findings on the receipt of the related telegram of the district engineer on Thursday, September 29, 2022, the railway district manager directed a query issued to him and other persons concerned, see appendix A, page 70. In retrospect, in flagrant, described to the latest 72 hours period of response to that query, as allowing the external rules, engineer Akepadi chose to respond on Thursday, October 6, 2022, see appendix A, page 72. His excusable late responses to say, a list that played the seriousness in ought to have occurred in matter as is, under reporting of visible facts by private evidence. The Managing Director of the Corporation was accordingly complicated on the incident. In keeping with the approach of that report, the MP constituted seven-member committee with defined terms of reference to investigate the truck vandalization at Kamuru Station, located at 780 to 781 Zone 4, and common recommendations as a public. See appendix B, 1 to 2, and briefly, that's the, um, letter constituting the committee and the terms of reference. Uh, number six, the investigation committee had both oral and written documentary statement from all the eight invited officers, including the petitioner, see appendix A, pages 15 to 52, where they took the oral and proceedings from them, and pages 6 to 96. Their findings include, but not limited to the underlisted, number one, number one, the vandalism and stealing of truck materials actually occurred on September 21, 2022, and was discovered by Ganda in Manuel Bosi, a wild factual section. Number two, the vandalized, vandalized section is located between kilometers at 780 and 781, and consists of eight codes, a total of 450 steel slippers were discovered and vandalized and carted away, while another 461 slippers vandalized were discovered deep at the site and were awaiting to be evacuated. Number three, the incident was promptly and properly reported, some, was not, sorry, the incident was not promptly and properly reported, some truck officers in the North Central District acted unpleasantly. This include the actions and inactions of the district engineers, engineer Akepadi, PTO trap, Mr. Awas Friday. The principal, number four, the principal technical officer, trap, Mr. Awas Friday, was completely central, instructed his men to spread the recovered truck item back in the truck alignment, without any fussiness, knowing as an experienced truck officer, that they were even more vulnerable and at the mercy of the vendors from being carted away, although it came to September 28, 2022, which was delivered to the RDM office on September 29, 2022, a period of eight days after the occurrence of the incident, and consistent with RDM's report. Item number six, there was therefore clear evidence that the DE tried to control the incident from the, from the knowing of the RDM and management, what he means it was not of him to do so. This negates the ESR number 030301, and in contradiction with Railway General Rule number 131, which states that act without negligence in the performance of his duty and amounts to misconduct. Item number six, and seven, the DE was further complicated and implicated himself when he aided in the reporting the incident of claim that relied on the Zone 4 police to handle the case the way they had handled previous ones, which was well indicated. Uh, item number eight, the DE also defined the culpability when he declined giving account of the previous case in police of Zone 4 earlier ago from me. This suggested that they had been engaging in arrest and violence, and asked encouragement for destruction of NRC government facilities. This is suppression of record, stock information, and amount to serious misconduct according to PSR 030402. Item number, um, nine, the DE misused his authority when he gave completing directive not consistent to railway rules on replacement of vandalized truck materials. He directed to mutually aid and violence in evacuating what they had been earlier vandalized. This is an act of gross irresponsibility and amount to serious misconduct. The DE is confirmation that he gave such directive on item number four, is an acceptance of responsibility on that wise, on that wise, acceptance of guilt. He stated that he received the instruction from MD NRC through the former RDM, Mr. Frank Anchoco, and intermed with the former RDM, revealing that he never received such from the MD NRC, and never conveyed such directive to the DE, ESD. The DE's directive is not only detrimental and harmful, but also misappropriation and misapplication of his authority, a sabotage and criminal, which resulted in both who damaged public property, all of which are much serious misconduct, as stated in PSR number 030402. Number 10, the ESD did not adhere to the NRC communication channel, but rather resort to rely on police to adjudicate it, without reporting to its nearest superior, the RDM CEO, his employer, the NRC management. It should use that to timely report the incident and matter to suppression of record, stock information, which is a lack of serious misconduct, PSR number 03002. They should use that to timely report the incident and matter to suppression of record, stop information, which is an act of serious misconduct, PSR number oh three oh four oh two. He also contradicted the Nigeria Railway General Rule number thirteen K, which states in part, report at most to the immediate superior officer, any failure, accident, injury, damages, effects or occurrence affecting detrimentally the administration that comes to his notice in connection with his work. Number eleven, engineer Padi showed very poor self comportment, unruly behavior and arrogance when he appeared before the management committee investigating the track vandalization. He even boasted that he is well connected with high and mighty and regarded the committee so badly. This corroborated the former RDM's NCD procedure that he had highly post of connections and actually the officer lacked respect for constituted authority, same can be contrasted with the present and former RDMs. This is an act of insubordination, which is in connotation of PSR oh three three oh one and amount to misconduct. Number seven, following the committee's report submission, the highest decision making board, the senior staff committee on appointment, promotion, discipline, comparison of the directors or HOD members and the managing director of chair and best security delegated over the report, carefully examined and reviewed their recommendation, see Appendix C, one to six. Thereafter, it was settled based on very good, very well dressed, to comply to the look, engineer Ake Padi paid the DE alongside the PTO trap Zone Qua, Mr. Awas Friday, she would leave of their appointment, having found out news of serious misconduct in connotation of Railway General Rule nineteen sixty-four edition, chapter two, section fifteen and section eighteen DF and the Public Service Rule, chapter three, section four, number oh three oh four, O to T and U. General Rule nineteen sixty-four edition, chapter eleven, section fifteen and section eighteen DF provides as follows. Railway staff must within the capacity of their employment safeguard railway revenue and protect any instance of loss or possible fraud. No railway staff must appropriate for its own use, any property belonging to or in custody of railway administration. F of that rule, waste or wantonly destroy stationary stores or any other property of the railway administration. And the Public Service Rule, chapter three, section four, O to T and U, states that sabotage and road to damage of public property are forms of gross misconduct, which oh three oh four oh one defined as specific acts of very serious negligence and improper behavior, which is imical to the image of the corporation and which can be investigated and if proven, they need to dismiss up. It was further decided that other officers based on the commendable rules be recalled from suspicion and be stated to duty. The police prosecuted many suspects in their custody. Number eight, it is important to stress that we found this petition ridiculed with various misrepresentation of facts, misinformation and serious claims. So I wrote sentiment in his petition, contrary name as a chairman of the investigation committee. To put the record straight, just in the whole side, the deputy director for comment was chairman, was chaplain of the committee that investigated the track vandalization at Kamuru. Contrary to what he claimed, claimed that Mr. Achibor was the former RDM, was the one that was chair of the committee. Therefore, his assertion could have been correct. Again, as against reports in fashion from his petition, we did indeed to say that it was neither the trust of engineer Ake Padi, nor that of the security agencies, which did not receive due, that resulted in posting of some of our district managers back to the headquarters. I claim that they were posted back because of the incident of vandalism that was caught against them without any evidence. They were posted back because the district manager was promoted to level, to director level. And according to railway rules, he's only level fifteen, that's a higher position. You are promoted to DD, you go to the head office. And that was why the RDM was posted back to the head office and brought another person to replace him. Um, so, number nine, it is from record that it's tough to know that engineer Ake Padi, Padi and Mr. Awas Friday are not the only staff of the corporation who have been relieved of their appointment on grounds of serious misconduct in relation to vandalism of railway critical assets and other related offenses. The corporation is committed to employee discipline that ensures the early focus and will not hesitate to sanction any staff by acting violation of external rules. However, I place or connected the officers may be. And I want to stress here also that we have a process of appeal even after decided cases that is allowed from the external rules, which it is advice that staff go through and exhaust before they go outside, you know, to solicit for help, which he did not for. We have people that come back, we have few letters, brought it back with new evidences that we have add, add them again in the senior staff committee. We did not receive anything from him. The first letter was from his underdog. Number ten, we wish to observe the petitionary correspondence to the senior committee chairman once again to contravene our rule by the use of an unauthorized personally designed letter with NRC logo on it. He had been relieved of his duty thirty first of March twenty twenty three. The letter petition, the gain source to the liaison of the house was on twelfth July twenty twenty three, about four months after. We are surprised that it's carried and used our letterhead, designed with NRC logo, which I believe is an afterquoting and a personification. It doesn't have the right to do that. And we take it seriously and we even hope to take it further, the best. Even as a staff, he has no right to search. More so now he is no longer in services of the corporation. It is as sincere of that the highly esteemed senior committee ethics, who draw his attention to this and normally capable of inducing us in the light of his unrepentable posture to institute prosecution against it for coercion and impersonification. Number eleven, it is worthy of mention that during the sitting of the committee, while in protest with engineer Ake Padi, he had taken very unruly behavior to the company members, to the point of threatening them, some of them reportedly asked that he slap them. It was most voice of his countless reminders to them, which are from his own mind, that he has his people in the same and he uses annual, and he used, he used to annul, annul whatever decisions that are issued against him and to deal with anyone in the proportion of years in. This indeed is on the comment of a single staff. In view of foregoing, it is a fine result to submit to these distinguished committee members on ethic, ethics, criminal and public petition that the termination of appointment of engineer Ake Padi to pay and orders in relation to the incident, mother discussion was not based on any form of bias, rather on verifiable evidence of serious misconduct, which was investigated and proven to be correct. Hence, the manner of cooperation did not appropriate to apply a relevant external rules accordingly. This is a set of assurance on my highest regards, engineer Dr. Ephesio Kirem, FSNH, FDR, managing director, see you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, engineer. You have a copy of what?
Yes.
You had a friend, what was it? The spirit of prayer. What's your view?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your opportunity once again to be here. And as I already said, my name is engineer Ake Padi. Um, I'm here for justice. And justice is based on two reasons. One, that my fundamental human right was possibly violated because of refusal to compromise my emotional standard. Then number two, I was victimized and my appointment was terminated from duty because I play a role of a misupplant exposing the activities of vandalism and sabotage of railway tracks carried out by the district manager. This is the reason why my appointment was terminated. This is the two reasons why my appointment was terminated. I would love to start by saying that from the termination letter, what is stated in the termination letter was the incident at kilometers six hundred and seven hundred and eighty, kilometers seven hundred and eighty one. Mister Chairman, this incident happened on the twenty first of September twenty twenty two. While the incident happened, I received a call from the principal civil engineer covering that section at Kamuru. The principal detective officer informed me was using that there was a incident of theft and vandalism of the truck. And then the staff of that section, while a true cited a group of individuals on the track, vandalizing, removing the company on the track. And then the staff went after them. There were five of them in number and they went after them and four fled away. And then he were able to arrest one person. Then arresting this one person, they took the person to the police office at Kamuru.
Yes, my intention has just begun by my comment in fact that you have given this reaction to this committee. Okay, we are just simply asking if what the managing director, who is representing, has said as to whether or not you've shown and vandalized the, sorry, uh, as to whether what the managing director has said to have proven so to us, like you've shown and vandalized the general railway corporation property. And when you are got, you are given a very limited reply on time, right? Are you ever giving a point of this?
I'm giving a point, I'm, I'm, I'm doing this many, I'm doing.
The query is, and I responded with.
Uh, madam, the query is Appendix what? Engineer, which of your work?
Appendix A, page seventy.
Appendix.
A page seventy.
Appendix, right.
Right, Appendix A, page seventy.
Okay, I, I believe I'm saying a very, you're saying a, a, right. I believe your responsibility in the corporation is different from that of the district. Uh, district manager, right? Your responsibilities are different.
Yes.
Your names are different.
Yes.
So if it was the district manager that committed the crime, why would you be punished for reporting?
Tell me, Mr. Chairman, the issue I won't respond to whatever she asked.
Answer my question first.
Can you refer to your question first?
Did you hear me? You are engineer.
Who is? Exactly.
What is the new one?
Uh, Mr. Austin, which one?
Do you play the same role with him?
No, he's a district manager, I'm the district engineer.
You reported that the vandalism was caused by the district manager. You reported that he was the one that vandalized the, or stole the items, not you.
Not me.
Then why did they punish you?
That is why I, from my book, I said I was victimized.
Yes, why?
Because of playing the role of a misupplant.
A misupplant.
And then playing the role of a misupplant is that I exposed the activities of the district manager. Why am I saying I have a fact and I will present that fact here? Now, the issue of vandalism had happened where I had to walk with community officers within Kasha section. Then, eventually, the truck was arrested. While the truck was arrested, trauma denied. I was busy communicating to the army, to the army, uh, personnel in Kasha to successfully arrest the truck. I want to be specific on what I'm saying actually, on the business, so that, um, they will, the fact of that thing of bringing this in time. So, while the truck was arrested, why?
Engineer.
Yes.
You don't want to complicate the decision. What you are supposed to do for us to make this mark at this? All right, I said in the spirit of prayer, two of you are sitting here. She read, uh, from page one, she read from page one to.
To seven.
To page seven. When you listened to all of what she had read. What I had expected is that when you are given the chance to state your apologies, it's not to go back narrating what you have noticed. It's to force where she has lied against you. All right, not to go back narrating your story and telling us how you wait in the night to push, are you the security officer?
No, Mr. Chairman, no, I'm not, I'm not going back to what I already saw this comment.
Tell us that, tell us one by one, all the allegations here.
Yeah.
Where you were wrong.
I want to say, Mr. Chairman, that all what they have said is worthless, they are all lies. And I want to say it that I have my evidence to prove that all what they are saying here is nothing they lack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and my colleague. I welcome you to our visitors. My name is engineer Pak, I said, you know, as, African S, representing the normal, uh, engineer Pak Di Buke. Please, see, the volumes we are having here, if we go by your own approach, will not deliver anyone here to avoid you. Because we read and we are, go straight. You have given us your passion last time and listening to you, I was here, bye. Now, she has presented the version of the railway corporation code. Now, as she was reading, what I expected from you is to be highlighting where she's wrong or where she's alleging, okay? Now, you tell us at this stage, so, 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 and she's not by numbers, so, or so, 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 this is false. You bring out your evidence and drop, just like that, to help us. And the mention of your late reporting of incident, oh?
Yes, sir.
Am I right? Did you listen to that? And that mean, in that case, they are talking of negligence.
Late reporting, late as a not quite.
Yes. But let's finish with a, before we miss the body matter, the talk of your late reporting that you live what has a winged and assertive negligence here, another one, maybe whether you had understanding or, or, or the other, so that's, so go straight and, uh, destroy their allegations before us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Senator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was even trying to go through that, but, uh, Chairman, I'm committing. Mr. Chairman, I, I want to start with the query that you mentioned that you issued to me. And that was from the 29th September 2022. And then the response, my response, I responded was, I received a telegram reporting incident on the date stated. But it was an advanced copy sent via WhatsApp and sent it is on WhatsApp, it is not signed. And I had to wait on that copy. As you know, it has to pass through the, uh, principal civil engineer office. The telegram along with other mail from the, uh, principal civil engineer office. But to me, on the date, I immediately forward onward transmission to the admin office, copy attached. Here is the copy, here is the copy of the telegram that was sent from the DC, from the, uh, principal civil engineers of, this is the telegram. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Okay. Then the next paragraph says, it is important to note that, from the section, in most cases, do not get the principal civil engineer's copies. They meant to me on the day they were written. They were taken for copy of the images. This was the case in one, the videos were quite sad. Again, I will have call to admit the argument of the law, but I wanted to get the report very before reporting. As you know, early reports are often times sketchy. In the last paragraph, the earlier report was under report because I did not get all the data at once on the video going inside. The police department at Kamuru and the police station at Zungwa, where the suspect are being detained. I bring to the notice, every detail as a form too. As a human, I must admit that my discretion may sometimes be faulted. But be assured that the delay was not intentional. I earnestly hope that you consider the reason and the challenge and accept my explanation. This was the response from the query that the district manager gave to me. Then furthermore, why the district manager issued this query to me? This is, this is the copy of the minutes I made to him that insisted for him to issue me this query. And then in that query, he said that the report, I refused to inform the management that is the one and matured that the report I gave was under report. This is not a report, it was a telegram in my private story where I come from. This is what we call email, but in railway corporation is referred to telegram. A telegram is just a few lines trying to inform all the management or try to inform an individual. This is what an incident that took place. And then what follow is a comprehensive report. Now, when the district manager issued me this query, I responded, he gets a response within 72 hours. I responded to his query. Then after that, here is, as I said, here is the copy of the minutes I sent and I made to him for his actions to be taken on this particular issue at Kamuru. Okay. Thank you. All right. Then after that, what follow was a comprehensive report which, after, was a comprehensive report that I, I put up and sent. So after getting a full data, doing my due diligence, analyzing the situation, I was able to come up with a report that stated clearly what really on fire on the date mentioned in this, and this is the report. Then, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you interest to know, look that, this particular case at Kamuru, kilometer 780, kilometer 781. The police do their due diligence by carrying out a thorough investigation. The first investigation carried out was at Zungwa Police Station. And this particular case was transferred from Zungwa Police Station to railway police in Kampung. Which you did your thorough investigation and here is a police report. Here is a police report. Then to add to that, Mr. Chairman, to add to that, here attached is the court verdict.
Court.
The court verdict sentencing the two staff, the two suspects, that is the railway staff who was involved. And even money was exchanged in hand, they even gave money, 300,000.
Yeah.
The railway staff that was involved, that was the one that mastermind, one Ilya Jacob, who mastermind this, uh, test and vandalization of this particular, uh, kilometer 780 to 781. These individuals were thoroughly investigated and charged to court. And then here is the police report and attached is the court verdict that he was sentenced for one year imprisonment with option of 50,000 and two thousand mistaken.
It was.
Yeah.
Are they contained in your submission story?
Exactly.
They are contained.
Exactly.
Um, if, if they are, uh. Their for such management of, uh, Magyarian Railway Corporation. Do you have a police report to, uh, this incidents that is talking about?
Yeah, where the case was set at the police station and this Jacob Ilya, which is contained in our report. That Jacob Ilya, who is a track officer, Ganga, who is, is, is the one that is, um, the, the district engineer in charge of overseeing those staff. Is, was found corporate and was sentenced.
What you mean by Ganga?
So that's a technical word for those trackmen that work and we have lengthmen, we have track and gangas of gangas, they are the ones that work on the track. We have them in sections. So the one in this section, one of them is Jacob Ilya, who was, um, found to have been involved in the vandalization of our track. And they're directly conduct him, the PTO, I mean Friday, is the one that he worked with and he works with the district engineer. And this information was brought to us by the RDM who eventually went to the Zungwa Station. And even the Ilya was, he saw the Ilya there and the Ilya didn't go with the RDM. So he told the story of how one alleged lawman gave him from our house on Naira to, um, get our track materials. And they were able to take 450 sneakers away. They caught him with 7, 470,000, but he had already spent the 30,000 maybe in the process to get other people to help in vandalizing the truck. So all of this wants, what the railway management is saying is that we are aware later of this, but it was not recorded as it should be by you, who is the district engineer that should be in charge of our assets, that replaced you in a position of authority.
The, the question I'm asking, the question I'm asking is, if he claims this is a police report, though, uh, yes. There isn't any, uh, any. And there isn't any police come or let a, 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 and you are not denying it either. But, uh, you are aware that the case was at the police station at one time?
Yes, sir, we are aware.
Uh, who took the matter to the police?
Um, on these third dates, they, they were, were told that police, those, um, trackmen, we had one who was in man, manor.
Who reported to the police?
Who reported and police, uh, did their work and, um, were able to apprehend some of them, some of them at that.
And later, people were charged to court.
Yes.
You are, you are aware of that?
We are aware, in our information to have a, uh, a, there's a, like a sentence that was given to the Ilya, which is a one year imprisonment and option of 50,000. And I'd like to put in the record that normally if a case is not concealed and all of that, normally our preference is for cases to go to the Nigerian Civil Affairs, uh, um, commission. Who have that, um, very high mandate to charge, they are the one mandated to protect Nigerian, uh, critical assets, national asset, that is their mandate. And so we brought that to railway as a command and we normally want to charge those cases to them so that they can get, charge them to the ICOT, that'll give them 21 years imprisonment because this is a serious matter. Is watered down, they get someone one year imprisonment with option of 50,000 Naira, fine, to go. You know, and other cases like that, so it's all about connivance and all of that, which, you know, all of these perpetrators. We've had cases where those that buy our, um, our track materials, the companies that buy them, they charge them, they water down them in magistrate court. And so we, we take that seriously.
Do you mean, well, can we understand what was his role in this issue of reporting to police and charging to court? Has he any role there? Was he the one who reported to police? Yes or no?
His role is to report to the management.
Who, who reported to the police, that's the question, was, was it the one?
No.
It wasn't the one?
No, as we, as we got to know, because he did not report to the RDM, RDM found out.
Who reported to the police?
Emmanuel Wasimima. Emmanuel Wasimima, one of the trackmen.
Good, let me put it also on record, as you told us to put on record. You know, you are telling us, fine, they're supposed to report to the appropriate authority that is charged to protect critical national assets, fine. So raising it now, this doesn't have, it has nothing to do with the matter here. He is not the one who reported to the police, that's wrong. He's not a judge, that's secondly. As far as I'm concerned, any judge that is ruling on matter, somebody stood something worth of, uh, uh, 20 billion and you are giving him sentence and say option of 5 Naira instead of option of that 20 billion, he's wrong. For me, it is wrong, but that's not what we are here, we are after a strong matter. The area I found that major, we are talking of negligence, not doing what is supposed to be, do, what to do at the appropriate, as, as I went to. So what I want to know is how and what made him not to have reported? If, first of all, did he report at the appropriate time or not, as what you want to verify? And if he didn't, what made him not to have reported at the appropriate time? Do you understand me? Whether he's really negligent or connivance, that's it. So the area you can't get it, is moving towards that he connived. That's what we want to know. If not, organ, try to disseminate what they have said, for that reason. Uh, if we cannot contradict her, and she has contradicted, might mean that you can go and give that, you can, you have to ask. So we'll go through it critically. Yes, uh, the incident, this incident that went to the police and ended up in court. I am aware that, I'm aware that vandalization, the female organization is still in, so, is, uh, a continuous state. Is it connect, this matter, is it connected with the case, uh, Obe is being charged with this?
Yes, sir. This matter of Zungwa, the one, uh, the track vandalization at, uh, 780 to 781 is the one that's being charged.
If, uh, if an incident happened, somebody was reported to the police and somebody was taken to court and charged, why is a different person being dismissed?
Sir, um, as we've said, the district engineer is the one in charge of that section allocation. And it's, uh, part of his responsibility is to protect railway critical asset and everything under his safeguard, railway revenue. He has refused to do that in this instance because when it happened, he did not report it. He tried to conceal it as far as me and, you know, it's over a days before we got, and it was because the RDM went to Zungwa Police Station himself to find out when he got wind of it from other people. So he, and he had said that he had, he thought he would handle it like he had handled other similar cases, meaning he could do it on his own without railway management know. So it speaks of connivance and a lot of things. Because also all of these issues that people are only giving the one year imprisonment is not supposed to be if we are, if we're sticking it through the normal, um, um, routes. is not supposed to be, if we are, if we're sticking it through the normal, um, um, routes as it should be, the matter of serious issue in Nigeria government corporation. So we believe he acted negligently and then concealed information from the authority.
All right, I, I understand from the admiration that Mr. Opey, uh, is not a criminal, but is doing, uh, charge for negligence.
Confirmed?
And, uh,
Yes, sir.
Confirmed? He's being charged for negligence, but not doing his duty. And, uh, because of that, he's being looked at as an accomplice.
Yes, yes, sir. So emulating and by, abetting by not concealing, by not revealing, by telling us.
It's okay. Uh, as, as, as with the case of, uh, judicial system, of punishment, I don't know whether this parliament will blame the judicial or blame the parliament. Because some of our laws, if you look at it from colonial times, are made to encourage people to commit crimes. Fewer than do is it? We have an incident in this country that somebody was accused of stealing millions. And when he was taken to court, he was charged two hundred and fifty thousand, or six months imprisonment. And if I have the opportunity of stealing millions and charged it, I, I'm going to pay two hundred and fifty million, I'll continue to, to do that, provided I use that millions to help my children. However, I give people example all the time when we have to make laws. When there are death penalties in other times, it's not that they want to kill their man. For example, in China or in the whole of Asia. I know of, uh, a minister of finance who was executed because of ten thousand dollars. Right. Here, we were trying to, our, our, our children across the world are in prisons, are waiting death sentences because of drug trafficking. Here, we were deliberating on drug offenses, and somebody suggested death sentence for anybody who is caught or engaged in drug trafficking. He was nearly crucified, even by our own colleagues. Public took him on, and that's the problem we are in. However, it's something that the public that we represent and us will have to agree on the more repolishings that we make. However, this committee will sit down and look at your submissions, both the writing and what you have said verbally, and will give you a date to come and hear our verdicts. On this note, I, I wish to adjourn sitting with you, Sam Dack.
Mr. Opey?
Uh, yes, I'm representing, uh, I'm Ita Isien.
Ita Isien, and the general company is not here.
Yes, sir, I, this, I, I, I really wanted to be put on record that this is the fourth time that the Nigerian Customs Service is giving letters. And I, I have a sincere belief that it is a calculated attempt to frustrate this petition. It's a calculated attempt to frustrate this petition. They were here, this petition has come up on the thirtieth of November, twenty twenty-three, twenty-first February, twenty twenty-four, this is today.
I, uh, I am not there yet, so I can't.
You are not there, sir.
That's, uh, Ganso.
Yes, yes, sir.
Who will find you. And, uh, it is on record, please put it on record that this is the fourth time. Has, has, have they ever appeared?
Yes, sir.
On this?
Yeah, they came once.
Once. And this is the fourth time they have appeared. This is the fourth time they have appeared. That means that the first one they appeared, three other subsequent ones, they have appeared.
So what I'm saying, if you even, if they appeared, their torment was on their instance. They requested for it.
I, I understand.
You know, they requested for it.
I, I believe this is, this will be, I want to assure you that this will be the last adjustment. We, this committee will take a stand if they are given the death date and they do not appear.
And we were here yesterday, sir, and they should have come today.
They, they have apologized to you that we couldn't see.
They have apologized yesterday, sir. It's okay, sir.
No, because of the death of our colleague, we couldn't see this procedure that once one upon a time, we are just sitting with any other.
That if, that if.
Uh? We are all going to die anyway. If I'm waiting, uh, if I'm waiting, anyone of us that, uh, we are John Feneri and any other agents, okay. So, uh, yesterday, it's not, their fault is not our fault. But since they are supposed to appear today and they not, they assume that they have, uh, defaulted, and we will not take it next time. Yes, we are. Okay, there was, uh, okay. Yes, next, uh.
The next case is between John, John Iya, Esquire, on behalf of Mrs. Julius, Pippin, Esogini, and several others, by his chairman, Federal Civil Service Commission.
Sunusam, yeah? Sunusam, please. Well, always, uh, who's the petition?
Well.
Hi, Oga Ba Ede.
Hi, Bas, hi, Bas.
Who's the deputy so eh, and the attorney? I'm Owaru. Hi, Oga Ba Ede, rest of the movement and appointment, overseeing the office of the permanent secretary, do something so eh, that evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the real truth, and not the other truth. The petition, who is the petition? Why, sir?
And, oh, but, sir, my man. He's always so. That evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the real truth, and not the other truth.
So, let me talk. Yes, petitioner, please, can you, uh, tell your case?
Yes, the distinguished chairman, distinguished senators or members of the committee. My name is John Kepokai, principal of natural matter, and he's presenting the petition of, uh, Julius, Mr. Julius Pippin Esogiri and several others. Mr. Chairman, sir, this is the second hearing. Um, the crops of the petition, or the case of the petitioners, is that sometime in two thousand and eight, eighteen, sorry, they were employed by the Federal Civil Service Commission. And, uh, going forward, they were sent to their various departments, which they reported, and upon reporting, the fellow, the, their various departments wrote back to the Federal Civil Service Commission, asking them to authenticate if indeed the list of staff they sent to them were duly employed by them. Distinguished chairman, there was a letter from the Federal Civil Service Commission, authenticating the fact that, yes, this was this list of staff we sent to you for employment. They resumed their duties, and in the course of their employment, they had cost to sit for a promotion examination. They sought for promotion examinations, which by their regulations is being conducted by the Federal Civil Service Commission and the head of service of the Federation. Their results were published, that they had passed. And upon that, they proceeded to, uh, do staff changes, and then they, they deserted their employment. In twenty twenty-one, there was a purported, uh, very wide, nationwide verification. And the names were listed among the people that had fake letters of employment. Distinguished chairman, sir, before I progress, I will say that in the list, they purported to have, uh, I mean, I mean, in the list they verified that, yes, this were duly employed. They still have their colleagues still working at the Federal Civil Service Commission in their various departments. And, uh, up until twenty twenty-three, sir, promotion letters of the petitioners were still being released. Like I said earlier on, the strength of the petition is the fact that when they were employed, they said Federal Civil Service Commission sought to authenticate.
Please, uh, arrange you to read that. Uh, sir, twenty twenty-three, promotions of the petitioners.
Yes, sir.
Uh, still being released.
Still being released. We have submitted, we have the documents, we have submitted them before the committee. And the, their various letters of employment and all what you have said so far, where their promotions, I mean, where their, uh, results of their promotion exams were released, were also attached there. So at the last adjourned date, the Federal Civil Service Commission, when they alleged that the employment letters were not signed or that the signature of the, their, their staff who signed their letters of employment, which across board is the same person by the name Ibrahim El Yaku, they deny that he wasn't, he did not sign the letters of employment, and he has mandated that he be invited to buttress that allegation. Distinguished chairman, that is the case of the petitioner.
Uh, what is the name of the, uh, what is the name of the person, person Ibrahim?
Ibrahim El Yaku. Down there, I understand from the invitation, it's also, his name is Liskeya.
Liskeya? No.
We don't know.
All right. Uh, Sunusam, please. Did you ask, uh, the, at the last hearing, Brian was asked to be invited, did you invite him?
Yes, we invited him to the Federal Civil Service Commission.
To the Federal Civil Service Commission?
Yes, because that was his last call for court.
Okay. The last one. Um, Opey, uh, Opey?
Oga Bas.
Oga Bas, sorry. Uh, you gave the letter across to Brian. He, we saw the letter, and, uh, my colleague here, Basie, knows the director, he has retired already. So I told him to contact him with his stable to get him on food. And he said he snapped the letter and sent it to his, uh, WhatsApp. So he can, it's movement of what, uh, it's got to go. Uh, Mr. Chairman, sir. Uh, okay, uh, my colleague came after you have introduced yourselves. Please, can you introduce yourselves again, and your positions?
I am Oga Ba Ede, Director Recruitment and Appointment, overseeing the office of the permanent secretary, Federal Civil Service Commission.
I am Bas, the primary, principal and main officer in the recruitment and appointment department. So my director, Abdullah, asked.
I am Tony Nigeria Esquire, I'm, I'm Assistant Leader at twice, sir, in the Federal Civil Service Commission.
So I actually sent the, a copy of the invitation across to him, and we spoke on phone. He is indisposed, and he said he is currently in KP State. He was the Director Recruitment and Appointment between two thousand and eight and August two thousand and, uh, sorry, two thousand and eighteen and August two thousand and nineteen, when he retired from service. So since two thousand and nineteen, he has not been in this, uh, active service of the Federal Civil Service, he has retired. So, but because I worked with him, we have maintained relationship, and I got across to him, but he said he's indisposed, he was in KP State as at that day. He even went for treatment. The last time we were here, we also told the house, he had, he is indisposed of sick, and he's not been able to be here.
The, the most important thing is that, uh, that we will accept is that he is indisposed, because anybody can be sick. If not, wherever he is in the world, the constitution has empowered this parliament to invite anybody, anybody, including the president, if he has a case to answer. And in this case, he has a case to answer. That is why we want to hear from him, to be able to balance our judgment, because this is the House of Justice. You brought us here, and you expect us to institute whatever we are doing at bit of it. Now, you have heard from the petitioner's side, let's hear from you. Before you, uh, my colleague will ask you, before you fore. Please, this issue, Chris, to the speech of employment, go. Whether, I think it boils down to whether from lately employed for otherwise. Uh, am I right?
Yes, yes.
But I'm sorry, engineers, we deal with figure mathematics, so like some. Engineers, we deal with figure mathematics, so lights on rise, no poem, no drama, like the lady there. So, when this employment issue is questioned, when was it, uh, when I levelled about, he levelled it, because when, which year, see, which in this period? You said you were directly between 2018 to 2019 years. When was this, you know, what, this meeting was that it is being disputed? Or what they named for twenty years?
We, we, the 2018 employment they are referring to, which is unknown to us, is 2018. The employment, the people so employed that you are rejected, were employed within this period of 2018. From your allegation.
Yeah, you just answered, but I'm not saying they are right and wrong. But what I'm trying to assert is what you are contesting happened within 2018, 2019.
Yes, so, so they say, well, we that, uh, they, they do not support this, but we are not, uh, our such employees.
Thank you, now, uh... I, I wanted you to state your position, for instance, before I ask you some questions from what your counsel has said. So let's hear from you.
Honorable Chairman, sir. The petitioner may refer to employment that was carried out by the Commission in 2018. Minister of Environment. Before the Commission carries out any employment, there is a waiver issued by the Office of the Head of the Civil Service of the Federation. I would like just to ask the lawyer if there is any waiver like that at his disposal on which this employment is referring to was carried out. Because the Commissioner is not aware of such a waiver. And secondly, this said employment that was signed by the Director Recruitment and Appointment, usually when there is a recruitment in the Commission. In the Department of Recruitment and Appointment, the records of the officers are there. In the state, uh, commissioners of, the commissioner representing this, the, the candidate states will have the record there. Because he is the one that will first endorse the application form submitted by the applicant before the letter of, uh, appointment is issued. It is after he has endorsed that, that a request for release of, uh, letterhead for use in printing the letter will be made by the Director Recruitment and Appointment for the issuance of the letter. In the Commissioner's offices, there is no such record to show that the people who were employed within that particular period. Neither do we have the record of such officer in the Recruitment and Appointment Department. In the Commission, we make use of records. And that's why I am able to know that these people were not employed. Even though I was not there at that time. When we got this information, we went into our records. But we couldn't find details of these officers anywhere in the Commission. So, the appointment is fake. Then the contrary, if there is...
Thank you, sir. Do you have specific content?
Okay, thank you, sir. If the appointment is, uh, fake, how come Commission will be responsible for deploying the officers in the department? Let alone talking of authentication. So if they got a letter, a letter means no to them. What is the guarantee that they cannot also write authentication letters themselves and even carry out deployment? So promotion designs, the recruitment department is not in charge of promotion designs. These officers be referred to belong, if, if ever they have, they belong to, to a particular ministry. And Commission wrote after the verification of 2021, sending out the list of people identified as fake employees to Federal MBAs to stop their salaries and, uh, remove them from their records.
Sorry.
And we have the letter, which we wrote. The total number of people affected at that time was 559. And these people, he is now trying to defend, are part of this 559. So whatever happened after they have forged this letter, is, is, is not known to us, it's only known to them. So because we do not know them. So, sir, the Commission is a creation of a constitution among the fourteen constitutional bodies. And the commissioners are made of high integrity. And they will not do anything that were against the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. What reason would the Commission have to hate any human being? Respect for human, uh, uh, person is there in the Constitution. And somebody that is an obstacle of the Constitution will keep to that tenaciously. How come the same people will now go against if it is true that they have appointed these people? Turn around to say they are fake. I don't think the Commission will ever do that, sir. So I appeal that this, uh, distinguished committee, we look at this, uh, uh, matter carefully. We have appeared even before the, the, the House of Representatives, when the case was brought up and it was dismissed for lack of merit. So similarly, sir, I want to appeal that you looked at this matter carefully and, uh, decided in the best interest of the nation. Forgery is a very serious offense. And the offender should not be allowed to go free, that should go free. Now, the last time we were here, sir, we informed the committee that at the House of Representatives, we brought machines, which we used to show that the letters they were using, which they claim the Federal Civil Service Commission to them were fake with the use of our machines. So the committee then said, they will, at the next, uh, meeting, uh, next hearing, arrange for their own, uh, independent forensic expertise to come with it in their own way of identifying fake or genuine letters. So we thought, as they come, we are also here with our, with our machine, the machine we use at the House of Representatives. We, we are also prepared to use things to prove that these letters are different from the authentic letters we have, sir. So they, they make reference to the fact that their colleagues are still working in various ministries. Who are these their colleagues? If they know that their colleagues are, it would mean that they know themselves as partners in progress. Because if you don't know your neighbors are partners in progress, how will you know that he's still working? Should assist the Commission to, uh, give this type of, uh, giving the boss, right? And initially, we had thought this matter would just, you know, when we went to this House of Representatives, they appealed that, so some of them were carrying children and all that, that to look at them, in fact, that even if it was a matter of money, they would try to. But we say, we allow such things, sir. It will not stick well of the advantages. People, if they are not disciplined for doing the wrong thing, others will not, uh, stop. They'll keep the, 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 the similar offense. So to, uh, ensure that we have something in the country, it is good, we look at this matter and see how we can effectively tackle it, it is a menace. As I was coming this morning, my chairman called me, drawing my attention to a, uh, an advert reportedly emanating from the Commission that there is going to be recruitment, that people should apply, that they should hurry up to Federal, they even gave the address of Federal Civil Service Commission and that people should go to their various, federal secretary to inform. The Commission has never, uh, carried out any such, uh, advertisement. So it is still part of the people who try to stamp it. And we know there is desperation in the land. People want the job. So if they can do anything, there are people who can easily fall prey. But if we are able to identify people who do this, carrying fake letters, people discipline, and others will take, uh, learn their lesson from there and, uh, we have, uh, a better society, sir.
Thank you. Now, what is the process of getting and employing the advocate? My colleague to answer the question.
Um, the deserting of appointments lies under the body of the Office of the Head of the Civil Service of the Federation, not in the Commission, sir.
Okay. I ask this question because I have recalled in here a gazette of, uh, fourth November, 2022, as a list of, uh, new applicants. And one of the petitioners is listed as having been recruited, um, on the date of August 2019. And another gazette, confirmation of appointments. Left it same date. Pering the name of, uh... Pering the name of one of the petitioners as having to, uh, confirm on the date of August 2021. So if they were not, uh, employed or given appointments, how come their names appear in the gazette of, uh, government? Do you have, uh, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a full copy of this gazette?
Yes, sir.
Can you make it available to the committee? Because this is just a chance.
I understand, distinguished chairman, that is where your name is, that is where it will be available to you. Like usually in one. This is called one or nine. So the unit that will give it to you, it will wear your name.
Just, can I have your name? See, see counsel, huh?
Yes, sir.
Those type of, 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 by the time, before they give you this, you must have applied.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes.
So... You often have given us their letter forwarding to you. There's not that you have applied and you, you understand me? You give us, you applied, they forwarded to you, why they are forwarding to you for such a characteristic, for such a... You just some people, you know? Why they are, why they are replying to you? Why they are for giving you copies, huh? One, they will let the copy authenticated by certification. Two, there will, there will be a letter forwarding, a reply to you. Three, they will attach photo photocopy of the letter in the end to them. Are you getting my point?
Yes, sir.
And that, that's the point. In access of that, how you give us the copy? You need to bring the full volume, right? Which will size, you will need not to submit it for citation, okay? It's for citation, that is the job, for citation, okay? That's one for you. But for boss, you see, my chairman asked the process of getting someone the gazette. And you are saying it's not your job, it's the Office of, um, Head of Service, go. Before the name gets to the head of service, they must have asked you some processes. Are you getting my point?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe that is any of those two, uh, employees or so-called employees went there and fixed their names one after the other. Are you getting the point? And yet, if it's forged, I don't believe that all of them, they were all forgery dependent. Now, you give us an example of publication. Well, it's missing publication that they have published, they published that people are equipped when you are ready or when you didn't publish. Good. You see, just like that publication, you have made effort if to think this people are not of, of your own nature. You people ought to have made effort to exhume or unveil who is one racketeering because there will, there will not be one racketeering one after the other. Are you getting my point? Good. I want to ask you, let me, for example, have you seen something published on paper? Very simple to get the person who published it, what they've already read. I'm taking on you with that. In competition with, yes, that okay, what they've already read.
This, uh, publication we are talking about, the honorable Chairman immediately directed that we should publish in his claim.
Good.
Which are beyond, good.
That's all. That's all.
Those are the sources.
Okay. I will put it all to you that there is negligence of duty. If I don't say that should be recognized, it's very simple to get who did it. It's not there not to declare. For it not to happen again, you now go out there to find out who did it. And it's very simple. When you get the newspaper house or whatever, it has to provide, or the, the, the establishment have to provide, who gave them that privilege? And if you stop at disclaimer and you make no effort, I, I'm sorry, I don't want to pass, uh, verdicts yet. This people, I want, another thing I want to give from you. One, give us information if they are Nigerians. Two, anybody who is not a Nigerian is, has he natural, has he live or she naturalized? Otherwise, how they can, who want to do that? As well, because from what I'm seeing now, you are enjoying your own job. You are not doing all you're supposed to do by virtue of this publication you cited now. You are not doing what you're supposed to do. And I don't know how all this number of people enumerated here, they were all forging to enter, one after the other. And you left the, the hope is, uh, open for them all to enter. And how they dedicated to the extent of people waited. There's some, there's some questions to answer. For now.
Sir, the publication I refer to is not in the newspaper. It's just something forwarded on WhatsApp and people so, were calling. Are you people recruiting things? And I apply and all that, that was how we got to do it, it's not in the newspapers.
You didn't expect that, did you? Director.
Sir. Give me a bit of, uh, give me a bit of water. We have not faced similar problems. When people hack our accounts and give demand for money from people. People go on Facebook
Okay.
and see we are aiding recruitment. Or we are going to distribute fertilizers and people should contribute money. Sometimes we make effort to trace such accounts on WhatsApp, I mean, on, on, on Facebook. It's that of WhatsApp that it's a little bit difficult to get. But if it's just an advert, nobody collects an, an advert from a, a, an animal's source. But the point I'm going to make is it is true that you help to recruit
it is true that you help to recruit, journey, people seeking for employment and you post them to different departments. Now, the gazette that we have here is, uh, volume one oh nine, which we have asked council to get us the volume. And it is, the honest is also on you to go up to head of service, to find out if such a gazette exists. And you also come with your own copy. Because if it is, if they have faked it, let us also find out whether we have also faked this gazette. And, uh, the letter of promotion, we want to give us, like my colleague has said, the letter you have applied to the establishment for them to give you this paper. The letter they have written to you forwarding this employment or promotion, something to you, so that it can help us make an informed decision. Uh, until we get this, we are presently at a crossroad. They are, they are claiming you have genuinely given them employment. You are now saying they have faked it. They have faked the employment letters. But the evidence before us is what is perplexing us. And so we can make an informed decision when we get these documents that we are asking of now. And so please, the date of the publication to, yes, Mr.?
Vice.
Vice.
Uh, sir, if I may just say something. Uh, my director mentioned earlier that before the Civil Service Commission recruits anyone, there it is preceded by a waiver for employment from the Office of the Head of Service. And that waiver details the cadres to be recruited and the number, as well as to the ministry that those people are, uh, be employed into. The commission has not employed anyone into the Ministry of Environment since twenty fifteen. The last recruitment into the Ministry of Environment was in twenty fifteen. Since then, the commission has not gotten any waiver from the Office of the Head of Civil Service of the Commission to recruit anyone. The only exception are two. One, national honors awities. Those, we, those ones are special recruitments. The president gives them, um, that. And so if they, if what they study to requires that they be posted to Environment, a few of them were posted there. The other were those who did carry out regularization of their appointment from some default agencies. So it shows that they were earlier working from another place. So those are the only two categories we have moved there. We have not done any recruitment into the Ministry of Environment since twenty fifteen. Or since twenty sixteen, let me put it to you, because the last was in twenty fifteen. So if.
This employment was.
In twenty eighteen. So where did this come from? Now, Mr. Chairman, the last meeting here, like my director also mentioned, we have been to the House of Reps. In fact, it was at the eighth hearing that the matter was dismissed. And it was at that hearing we provided forensic evidence.
Same case?
Yes, the same case.
The House of Reps?
Yes, sir. The, uh, Com- Committee on Public Petitions as well. So.
What was the, what was the argument of the?
The matter was dismissed for lack of merit, because on that day, they were asked to bring, and I actually remember that this committee asked them to come with the original copies of the letters of appointment. I, I hope they have brought it. Because we have also come here with the original copy of what our own letter looks like. I want to present before you, using our own forensic device, to prove to you that there is marked difference between the letter they are, they are carrying, that they purported comes from the Federal Civil Service Commission with the one we have issued since twenty seventeen.
Counselor?
Yes, yes, sir.
You have one national assembly?
Yes, sir.
And whatever is done here to get concurrence from the House of Reps and vice versa.
Yes, sir.
And you know that. Now, if this same case was taken to the Senate, I mean, to the House of Reps and it was dismissed for want of evidence, or, or that it had no meaning, why do you have to bring it back?
Yes, sir.
Is it not what you call up your process?
Eh, distinguished, distinguished chairman called. Yes, yes, sir, distinguished chairman, for there to be abuse of court process in law, it is where the matter is going on concurrently in two different places. And in this case, it's not so. And I want to say that they hid the fact that the matter came before the ninth assembly.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, yes, chairman, eh, the simple chairman, they did not mention the fact that this same matter came before the ninth assembly and the ninth assembly ruled in favor of the petitioners. They hid, they hid that fact from, from this house.
The senate or the house?
The house, the house, sir. Ruled in favor, yes, sir.
But you said it was dismissed.
It was dismissed.
Okay. It's all right, it's okay.
Yes, sir.
We need to forward the evidence.
No, it was not even dismissed for lack of evidence.
I have, I have before me here Committee on Public Petition report on petition by innovative legal services on behalf of Mr. Junior Ferret. And that was, um, in the votes and proceedings of June sixth, twenty twenty three. Motion made and question proposed that the House do receive the report of the Committee on Public Petitions on the petition of innovative legal services on behalf of Mr. Junior Jerry Alambos. Agreed to. Motion proposed that the House, which I just read, and it was agreed by the House. And the most cautious.
Oh, no, it's a program. Okay. Here, that's a great, yeah, a great time on the.
Yes. Now, this, this was, this report was late.
Still agree.
Yes.
Those are just considered.
Of course. No, when you laid the report, they asked whether the House would accept the report.
Was it considered?
Was it considered? We want to have the, this is not a report, this, like, if I, if I come before the House, the Senate today, there is, there are procedures, the Senate President will ask whether there is any petition. I will stand up, I will say there is a petition from this, this person. You say, I shall lay it, I will come and lay it. Then the Senate President will ask the Senate, whether the Senate has agreed for this petition to be received. You say, when the years have it, then it is agreed to. That is the extent to which this report has said. It is not saying whether it was manipulated or on and a verdict given. So we want to have the verdict of the House.
Yes, yeah, yes, sir, the, the, that report of events is with the committee.
So, you see, from what the plaque was telling in the, from the report, it didn't seem as if it was concluded. The House expressed before the matter, uh, could be decided off.
Yes, sir, the matter was decided on. They went to, at the committee level.
Get it right, off your mind. See what you have, huh? It's just like employees reporting and what. Okay. It's just, can you listen?
Yes, sir.
Just like the raw this report here, we will decide them as a.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And the report, it left before the Senate.
Yes, sir.
The Senate will receive the report.
Yes, sir.
The next thing is to consider the report.
Yes, sir.
And we want you to go and dig out, was the report of the committee, after it was left, did they consider it? And what was the result of the consideration by the entire House?
Yes, sir.
That's it. So have you read the report, the document, they've considered? So you go and check, did the House consider the report left by the committee? Are you getting the point, is it here?
Very well, sir.
So you have, you have a copy of the committee report?
Eh, we have an assigned copy, if you don't know, I know the top of the, an assigned copy.
So the, the, the council should look at the prescription. The most situations in the person here, the committee are the set, or the set, they can't argue. And when they.
So what, what we want to have now?
Yes, sir.
Recommendation of the committee.
Yeah, there was a recommendation, sir.
Yes, that is one, one to cite.
Yes, sir, there was a recommendation and the, the man here who spoke from the report my people have, he appeared before the committee.
All right. Uh, since there is a date on the, since there is a date on the, on this, on the record.
Yes, sir.
They will get the publication of the articles of the House.
Yes, sir.
And see if it's, but get us a copy of the report that you sent out there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So that we can, we will not get it out of our reports. I was there for it, yes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you part of them? Part of who? You didn't take that out, so why you want to come?
Yes, sir.
That's it. Mr. Chairman, sir. Please, let's be order.
Um, please, sir, like I, like I earlier stated, sir, the committee at the last sitting asked that the petitioners come with the original letters of appointment they are having. And that we have.
You had, you had, you had the right to give it, because when they come in, they should come with the complete volume of, uh, of the gazette, one oh nine. They should also come with the letter he had written to the Ministry of Environment. Requesting, or wherever they got this, uh, uh, letter. Including the information on the promotion, all right? If he writes requesting for it, they will forward a letter from there to him that based on your request, this is what we are forwarding to. He should bring those things, once they are brought, it will help us make an informed. And then on our own path, if we get this assigned copy, sorry, if we get this assigned copy, we also lies with the House to find out whether that was, that report was authentic. Now we will see, okay, we will see if, what is this? Your side report?
Yes.
Don't, don't, don't worry, this is what you do that is. All right? We will lie for them to get it and then we will go through this and also find out. And from what he said sometime here, the name of the plaque he said, if they have member, if the chairman, in our chart, the name of the plaque here, I'm sure it's simple, we will get to the bottom of it. But the basic thing is that we want to hear from both sides, give both sides an approval of the decision. So that proper decisions will be taken. And you made a very silent point, Director, when you got there. This employment syndicate is growing bigger, it's like, it's growing into a, they are defrauding innocent citizens. I'm not saying that our, our petitioner today is a victim, because they, they are trying to prove their case that they are genuinely employed. But the honest is also on you to see if you can track out this syndicate. Because if you don't, you are as, uh, comprehensive as they are. Because if, uh, what, what I said, if a problem persists for more than forty eight hours.
If terrorism.
If terrorism persists for more than forty eight hours, it means that government knows.
Has a hand.
Has a hand in it. And so if you allow this to grow bigger, it means that something is fishing. Uh, I'm sure the plaque will give you. Okay. So, uh, Counselor?
Yes, sir.
You had what are requested?
Yes, sir.
Please, uh, on the next date that you are going to give it, you come with necessary, uh, this, so that you can help us make an informed decision. I can see the petitioner desperately trying to.
Yes, yes, sir, as, as.
Let, let me hear.
No, I just want to add that, as the, I mean, the respect of the gazettes, how they got this gazette in, I think she will be able to explain better. We didn't do a formal letter, rather they, our staff came up with, look, we have this, we have that. That was why we annexed all those things to the petition, so she can say better how they go about obtaining this.
Okay, excuse me. You don't, don't, you understand me? You said nothing, okay? But you can still go back wherever and get the official, okay? Did you hear well?
Yes, sir.
So don't say.
Eh.
Uh, Madam. Am I right to call you Madam? Yes? Okay. Please, before this committee now, since your counsel has started talking, don't say it, because your lawyer is trying to push your point back to you. So the better, the more you think point, the better for you. Don't make yourself look better than you're shown at this. Let your lawyer speak for you, since they have started speaking for you. Period. If you, if you wanted to talk on behalf of yourself from the beginning, you have started. But at this point, whatever it is, turn in the common data, all right? So off your mind, uh, Si- uh, Civil Service Commission, my counsel, our counsel.
Yes, sir.
This matter, Mr. John, said that you will be communicated of a new date that you will come to this, or you'll come on this, uh, with any necessary documents to prove your case.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh, I'm sure. Uh, I'm sure you have evidence that this matter was dismissed at the house.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, the chairman, when we, that day?
Yeah, yeah.
When, when we had demonstrated that the letters were faked? Don't, don't worry, I, I told you I was there for eight years, I know how it operates. And so, uh, we will, we will give you a new date. If you have the need, other evidence, to come and prove that this, uh, letters are fake, please come with that. When you're coming next time, come prepared with your machine and every other thing. I think it will not go beyond the next city.
Yes, sir, I want to add, sir. Now, we had requested at the last adjournment, uh, date, that not only should these petitioners bring their own copies of, uh, letters of employment, they should, they should also bring the letters of employment that were verified. Because like they keep saying, their colleagues in the office are still working, and they were all employed, signed by the same area board. So not only should their letters be, be, be verified, all the employment, or all the letters of employment for that year, of all their colleagues, they should also be brought so that they can be verified.
Counsel?
Yes, sir.
You know why I keep doing the communication to talk?
No, sir.
Because we all believe that through you, you can get to the hope of the look of the common man. But the director has said, the last time they employed people for environment is twenty fifteen. And you had it, and please don't put that to the director.
No, no, yes, sir.
He said the last time they employed for environment was twenty fifteen. Your employment was twenty eighteen. Gazette you are showing me was twenty nineteen, alright? No, uh, granted of twenty, to say you are sorry.
Yes, yeah, to me, for me, twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen?
Yes, sir.
So, since he said the last time they, they got it was twenty fifteen, it is left to you to prove him wrong. And those documents that we want you to prove him wrong are the documents that we say you should bring. So we cannot sit down here and be accepting, uh, what you do. So please, uh, when is the next date you're giving? You can come, come with any evidence to prove them wrong. They are also going to come with their evidence to prove you wrong. It is meant for this committee to do the faithful and make sure that justice is served. This committee is a job center. Uh, you can see that we, we cannot shame the agenda here. So give them, how many times have you appeared now? The second time, give them another chance from here. So you communicate, when we decide to, you should communicate, you talk, and they have to appear. This sitting is your mine, I draw the sign there.